Okay, we'll go ahead and start the work session. Let the record reflect that all elected members are present except for Mayor Bookmeyer. We've got the agenda before us and I'm glad you guys are at the table with us. I think that's a good idea. If it's okay with you guys, what I'd suggest we do, there's enough changes here that are tricky enough to follow. How about if we just go through those section by section? And if we have any questions on each section, we just deal with them. And then when we're done with the section, we go on to the next one. Does that sound doable? Okay, so you want to lead us through?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that we go to the electric first. The gas is in their burst, but let's in the package first, but I think go to the electric because electric has one additional item that isn't covered in the gas. So I think if we cover the electric, we'll end up basically addressing most of the issues that you find in the gas.
So that's the second page one?
Yeah, the second page one. So it should say in the head, yeah, in the header there, it should say, system right in the middle of that whole print. So when we, first, you know, you have the different types. The black bold is the original language that Tom Meyer and I proposed. The blue was the language that the company, the alliance, asked to have included. The gray is what they asked to have excluded. And then the orange there is the language that I asked to be included and they agreed. And then the language that I asked to have excluded. So it's kind of confusing, but we didn't want to, last time we just had the red line. We felt that that wasn't as effective as you go through. In the first section, probably the biggest thing is section one is the part that we need to discuss relative to, we may not get an answer here since it's right up front, but it relates to the issue of the windows openings. I've had discussion with Keith and John about what our desires are. They understand that we're looking at five-year windows for the 25-year life. So it's five, 10, 15, and 20 would be the windows that we would request. And I think they're willing to, you know, put words in their mouth, but on our discussions we had was that they were willing to consider that based off of the other items that were there. We may be able to give and take relative to getting that added into, changed here to go with five-year windows opening. So it may be that we can't get an answer, but at least if you wanted any comments you might have at this point relative to that item.
Well, I have an administrative question before we get into the specifics. Why do we need to address the term of the franchise agreement when we have it covered in section one when we have it covered in section 31?
Well, what they, what we did was, yeah, the language of the five-year, basically the bold was all that was left behind relative to the 25-year. I don't, I don't know that it's required to have it in both sections.
It can be deleted.
It could be.
Because it was in there, we left it.
So would it be possible to just delete it out of section one and then deal with it when we get to 31? And that means we've got a crack at getting through 30 sections before we have a potential disagreement?
Move that.
I guess, I appreciate that you're willing to talk about the term after we get into the language because I think that's, I agree, that's probably the best way to get through to it. Typically in franchise agreements, the term is upfront in the first section, but doesn't mean it has to be there. If you want to address it in section 31, we can certainly move language from there to section 31. That's not an issue. So we can do that. That's what your desire is.
I don't care if it's in section one or in section 31, but it seems redundant to have it in both places.
Does it need to be in both places?
No, it doesn't.
So you guys tell us, where do you want it?
No, what's your wish?
Well, I think it's, having it in section one does make sense because typically when you're dealing, imagine with your investors and so forth, they want to know what the terms are relative to the agreement. And they see that right at the beginning. And oftentimes, it's probably the most important issue that your investors will probably look at is what's the term with the city of Mason City. They'll be able to see this 25-year term and five-year windows. So deleting section 31, but we can, you know, we would come back.
Is that okay with you guys? So let's go ahead and talk about the regional windows.
So even though it states in here five and 15, we're going to add the 10 and 20?
We're just going to get rid of section 31, yeah.
Yep, and we'll add 10 and 20. That's what my, that's what, based on council discussions, that's what we would be doing. Section one would have five, 10, 15, and 20.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm looking for with these windows. And I'm speaking as an individual. These guys might have different thoughts. I'm not so much interested in these windows for the purposes of looking for a potential replacement for a line because we all know that realistically, that's not even feasible and it's really not an option. My biggest concern with having a 25-year agreement without any windows is changing technology and changing laws down at the state level. I would hate for us to build into here something that pins everybody down for 25 years and then have something change at the legislative level or technologically two or three years down the road and we can't take advantage of it for 22 or however years may be until we're up for renewal. So if there was some way, and I understand the risk of the windows to you and potential investors and so on, if we could build language in here that narrows the scope of the reviews, I would be okay with that. But again, I'm speaking as an individual and my colleagues may have a different opinion.
I agree with you. And I think that's what we've talked about, you know, for the last few months anyway.
How about you, Travis? I like the idea of a five, 10, 15, 20. What do you think about that?
For Scott's reasons?
It's fair.
Technology.
And state helps. I think it makes really good sense.
Absolutely.
I think we all pretty much agree with that.
Okay, so then the trick becomes, how do we wordsmith this? And I don't know that we can sit here and wordsmith this here, but...
What's their concern? Scott just explained really well that we're not doing it because we want to, you know, we know what the laws are, the IUB, we're joined at the hip. So what's your concerns about having those windows of five, 10, 15, 20 years?
Well, first off, we're certainly open to doing the windows. And I guess we're looking at it in the sense that with the five-year window, you know, we've publicly stated that we'll invest five, six million dollars in putting in a new operating center here. So we'd like to have, you know, at least, you know, it takes a five-year building cycle. Typically, by the time you acquire land, you sign, get the building out, and people moved in and things like that. And then we'd have, well, we're in the building, and all the franchises, and then we'd have to say, well, now we have to go through this exercise of trying to get that, a new agreement set up. What we're looking for is, we'd like to have, you know, we could have at least a 10-year window, so then do a 10, 15, 20, and 25 so that we have an opportunity to make investment and to make use of the facility. The other thing that relates to like technologies and such, you know, as technologies change, you know, we change with the technologies. Some technologies make sense to implement right away and if they're cost-effective and are efficient in terms of power delivery, you know, we make those investments. But in terms of right-of-way agreements, we look at this as being how we operate within the right-of-way. The technologies take care of themselves during the course of time. In terms of regulatory changes, when state law changes, that affects us directly. We have, because we're regulated by the utilities board, which in turn receives its directive from the Iowa legislature, those changes basically automatically kick in. We have to abide by those changes. And so that's why when we do franchise agreements with communities, a lot of them don't have an issue with the 25-year term because as laws change, those impact regulations which affect us. So they're automatically rolled up. But in this case, you've committed, you've communicated to us that you'd like to have the windows. I guess from our perspective, from a partnership perspective, we would like to see, ideally, we'd like to have at least a 10-year window and then 10, 15, 20, and then in the course of the agreement. You asked what our idea, that's what we're looking at.
How are we doing on a development agreement?
I sent them a draft, which I have, which I can forward around, and it's very basic. The, it doesn't have any language in it specifically relative to what penalties would be because I was expecting that the ability to have the five-year window would be included in here. And so it doesn't have anything relative to that as the recourse that we would take because it would be included in the franchise agreement. But it could be added in here, back in here. So, but it's very simple. It just says that the, that they'll agree to, a city will agree to a 25-year term for the documents and negotiate between the parties and that they'll agree to the terms that we present. They'll construct a new office operations center maintenance facility by December 1, 2014, maintain the employment level of X number of employees that they have. And depending on where they would build that, it's why it's highlighted, is the, depending on the cost to provide infrastructure, because we may have some costs on high end to provide infrastructure, so leaving that as a possibility, so.
That's kind of a big unknown.
Right, because we don't know for sure where they'll go.
Did we, did we put in there, in the city lines? Is that in there?
I don't know that it is.
If it's not, it needs to be in there.
Yeah, I don't know that it needs, but we can only give them, yeah, I guess we could, I guess it's a hidden incentive.
Well, we received it yesterday and you gave me a chance to go through it internally for discussion, so I guess it's something that...
That's fair, but you looked like you had another thought before you asked that question.
Well, you know, just as you guys sold your transmission lines, which was kind of a shock to me, and it really didn't, industry-wide, it really didn't make much sense to a lot of your employees, citizens, we just didn't understand that. So could you also sell a line? That could be on the block tomorrow. And that's probably a bigger issue for me than you guys worrying about whether or not you're going to have a payback on your property and investment. Quite frankly, that investment in a new facility is minimal compared to what your company does business with, you know. We reference our own budget a lot of times and we say, you know, that's not even a half a percent, a hundred percent of what our overall budget is. So I'm really not too concerned about that. Like you said, the legislators and the Iowa utility board have a lot more to do with the decisions you're going to make and we're going to make than anybody. And I don't see a lot of changes going on there. But I am concerned about whether or not a line would be sold in the next 10 years. Not only is the technology going to change, but so is the ownership of a lot of companies in this country and the world. And there's going to be a lot of new companies made too, created, and partnerships. And I want to be able to have the availability of a window in that contract, that franchise, to be able to address some things with you when those changes are made in new companies. And the IUB gets involved with regulation and stuff, and I want to at least have a, my foot in the door and be able to say, look, you know, don't forget about the citizens of Mason City, so, you know. And that goes with your holy territory that you cover, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa, Lake Park, Illinois, too.
We just sold the Illinois.
So you know, you just sold the Illinois is what I'm talking about, you know. So that's where, that's where more I'm at, is that that could happen for, and I want to be there. It's almost like the trading block in Major League Baseball.
Well, if a line's sold, doesn't the franchise agreement end as well?
It carries, no, it carries on to a successor, the successor of a line.
So they have, and that's protection for the city that, if that were to happen, the acquiring company would have the same obligations under this franchise agreement that we agreed to. Relative to, you know, changes in the industry, you know, the transmission line you brought up, it's interesting that there is, the federal government's looking at maybe taking over the transmission network, not just regulating it, but Mid-American, for example, this spring announced that they are reclassifying their transmission lines depending on the voltage levels, that they're going to put that under FERC or Federal Energy Regulatory Commission control. They have, they have done essentially what we are doing. What is different is that they will be filing with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission after they've been in operation for a year under that. Like I said, they filed that this spring, but they'll, they'll have a rate that will be approved by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and that will go into their customers' bills like ours is. Now, ours is a line item. The situation's a little bit different in that they're using their own employees and equipment at this time. You know, we sold the system to ITC Midwest and employees had an opportunity to go with that entity, and that's what they chose to do. So you're right, that whole, that whole utility industry is changing, and not just at the generation level, but even at transmission. And again, the federal government's even looking at that, which, who knows what's going to happen if that happens. It's kind of like with healthcare as the example, you know, how the federal government is taking over healthcare or at least, at least passed legislation to do so, not fully implemented yet, but we're seeing that type of, of activity relative to the transmission level. And so we looked at it as a company, that we had to make investments into the transmission grid, or we could also make investments into distribution, but we weren't in a position to do both. We also had generation to invest in, and so the decision was made to sell the transmission and put our resources into distribution and generation. And now you see other companies that do power, the Mid-Americans, now their, their transmission, they're looking at putting that under, under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission before, you know, who knows what's going to happen. So this is a whole, whole, whole changing.
So let me, let me try another stake in the ground and see how we do. What if we got rid of the five-year review and went 10, 15, 20, 25? And in exchange for getting rid of the five-year review, which means the first one's at 10, we get this development agreement in place first, which means it has to be clear that it's in the city. I think you guys are planning on getting on the industrial part, but we should have that in here. And we need to zero, zero in on exactly what we're talking about on item number four here because I don't want to do a development agreement with an open checkbook. With one contingency because of the concern that Max has expressed, if anytime from year zero to 10, there's a change in ownership, let's build something in that within, pick a number, two years, three years, automatically we kick in for renewal. That is to say, say for the example, it was three years, and at year number four, we're using year number six because we've done away with year five review. If we have a change in ownership at year number six, that means at either year eight or year nine, we could have a voluntary review. Does that sound doable? I think the concern that Max has expressed is pretty valid.
Well, again, I guess my simple response is that whatever is in this agreement transfers to the acquiring utility. The issue is that franchises are considered an asset, if you may, for the company. And so if we were to have that kind of arrangement in this agreement, that, okay, a company acquires a line, let's say, and now they say, now they got to go, you know, break a franchise or, you know, redo a franchise, that may or may not be acceptable to the acquirer. I mean, I'm, this is one franchise, but...
But that's why we put a two- to three-year window in there because I don't think we'd want to consider a franchise renewal with a brand-new owner until we had given them a chance to perform. But I think we're less concerned about the people that are buying their assets than we are about the people that are here in Mason City relying on their power for their homes and their businesses. You know, so that's, that's the two perspectives that we're trying to balance.
Well, it's something that we'll have to discuss, that, and see what we can do, any way of potential verbiage. I mean, I can't say today that we can do that or not. Obviously going to talk to...
But before we go down that path, is, would such verbiage be acceptable to at least the majority of the council?
You know, 10 years right off the shoot's a lot of time in this, in this discovery of technology, you know, that's going on. It's moving fast.
I have no problem with 10 years.
Well, I see that it's taking three years to build the facility, so what happens if we move that five years to seven or eight years and then go 10, 15, 20, 25?
That's a good point. We should put right in the development agreement a completion date.
Right.
That'll take care of that.
That's why we have here, but if December 1, 2014, saying they have to be completed by that day, they have to build it and facilitate.
Yeah, and you have to understand that in our business, we have a five-year build cycle. And so when we approached the city, you know, three years ago, trying to, we wanted to renew early because we had money available to get things done. Now the costs have changed and our window for 2012 is, that budget's pretty well done. So now you're looking at 26 months out to be in a building, and that just, that just doesn't typically happen. You get to acquire land, you've got to, I mean, just the whole process, you know, we look at a five-year build cycle and the way our capital money runs. I mean, it's appropriated in like in '12, '13, '14, '15, you know, '16.
Well, because of the work that's going to need to be done internal to the discussions we're having here, it's obvious we're not going to be able to bring this to a point tonight where it's back on the council agenda for third and final reading on Tuesday. It's just not going to happen. So I think, I saw Don nod his head. I think we have some cautious optimism for going, for getting rid of the first review of five years and having the first one at 10 with some of the constraints that we've kicked around the table. I would suggest that you guys talk internally. I think you're hearing what we've talked about and see where we end up in the next iteration.
Yeah, we'll visit with Brent. He's been good to...
It would seem to me, once, once we're done this evening and we end up with another cut, we're going to have to come together and at least one more workshop and go through it one more time because we don't know where the verbiage is going to shake out.
Are you giving the cashing net for the little, is that, one more workshop that you're finding out?
Only a couple months to go, Don.
Could be two or three more.
We want to make sure that, you know, we appreciate that we're having this discussion so we can work through and get to the agreement and that both parties can be comfortable with it and throw them out some, something on the table that we can consider and we'll discuss internally and get back to Brent and work with our people, see if we can get some language correct.
I just hope we can get it done before the year ending so we, you know, don't start over again with maybe three, two or three new consulars. I think, I think we owe it to them to try to put this thing, get it signed and agreed by year's end. That's, I think that should be our goal, not push it on to new people.
Well, I think, you know, having this discussion, this is helpful, so.
I guess I would just like to comment real quick, if I could, on the new technology concern. And to the extent that we're so highly regulated that if there was some new technology that would suddenly present itself that would make good sense for our customer to implement, you know, we're still at the scrutiny at the IUB and the Office of Consumer Advocates, they're always watching us. And so if for whatever reason we didn't take advantage of that and would have been a clear advantage to you folks and the rest of our companies, we feel a heap. Because I don't know that the reopener, if you will, on the franchise agreement would alleviate that, I think there are other safeguards in place for that concern. It's just my, my two cents worth on that.
Regulation can change in what, six months, seven months? Legislators can pass something in February, it can be a law in July. So that's how that works, which I'm pretty sure it is. So that's pretty quick and that could leave us looking pretty...
Are we going to drop this in the agenda at third reading of the next council meeting?
Yeah, I think we would. That's best.
We're just going to...
I mean, as long as, as long as there's, I mean, as long as we continue to have good discussion tonight and we're really down to an item. Yeah, I mean, we still have three meetings after that, and so as long as we can come to a pretty close ending here with only a few tweaks that need to happen in order to come to an agreement, then I think we'll end up in a position where it could be available on the November 15th agenda.
So we won't have a third reading the next time?
No.
Good.
And what we'll do is we'll, I think, based on what I've read, that there's enough only minor changes that I think that we can go ahead and do a modification to it as long as there isn't something new coming out tonight that I don't know about because we're modifying things, we're not really creating a lot of new. And so we probably could just do a third reading, but what we probably would want to do is publish again in the paper what the third reading is going to be so that everybody's aware.
Yeah.
I think, I'm kind of where Max is at on this one. I understand the technology and I think I have every faith that if something new comes out, you'll implement it and help the citizens of Mason City. But one of the biggest things I heard even two years ago, and not as similar to this, is need to be complicated. If government deregulates and opens it up, I think we owe it to the citizens then that they have that opportunity. And I know there'd be a huge investment from other companies if they were able to come in here and competition possibly make the price cheaper forever for all the citizens. So I'm kind of, I can, I could see it happening and I think we owe it to hold out on that, but that's just my opinion. And it may not happen either, you know, and you're still going to be governed by the IUB and legislation, so.
I'd like to, if I may, on the, on the infrastructure, you know, with natural gas is deregulated, as everyone here understands, so, you know, the producer sends it through the transmission pipes to the town power station, or strictly a distribution company. When electric utility deregulation was looked at in the late 1990s and early 2000, infrastructure didn't change, the delivery company didn't change, but who you could buy the product from changed. And so when we talk about the deregulation of the electric utility, the model would probably remain the same, that people would have choice of where they would get their, or who they'd buy their power from, and we would just be the deliverer of that, of that energy. That said, we all know what happened in California and subsequently what happened in Iowa, where the legislature was on the verge of approving deregulation. Then when the California thing happened and when in Illinois and Iowa, somebody don't want any part of it, that the legislature just felt that consumers were better protected having regulatory oversight as opposed to not having it. But you're, you're right, I mean, who knows what's going to happen down the road?
And we all here too, but, you know, we've seen cost comparisons between Mid-American up here compared to what you guys do. And I don't know why that is, and I'm not going to pretend I know why it is, but people see that. But even if they do deregulate, competition usually lowers the price in the long run.
Right.
So I don't know.
But this, but this agreement would preclude that. I mean, if deregulation comes, again, I think we need to keep in mind that this document is about our operating in the right-of-way. It's not about rates, it's not about generation, it's not about, it's, you know, our operating in the right-of-way. And then that's, you know, and then with consumer protection, the Office of Consumer Advocate has done a, you know, has served its customers well. I mean, you know, we're under an Iowa Utilities Board management audit. That audit began last month. They're gathering data from our company right now. Next fall, they'll release their report and we'll find out what lessons need to be learned or...
You know, you said, you said a mouthful there, and that's what we are. We're consumer advocates for the citizens in this case. You know, any big changes that are going to happen here to have us react in a five-year or 10-year, 15-year are going to come from your side of the table. I think we found out as a council, as elected officials, that past council members and future also are going to find, find out that it's probably cost prohibitive for the city to be into the business, to get into the business, it's just too much. And, and so... I think we found out as a council, as elected officials, that past council members and future also are going to find, find out that it's probably cost prohibitive for the city to be into the business, to get into the business, it's just too much. And, and so you're not going to see a lot of movement from this side of the table. But I want to be prepared, our future council members, I want to set them up so that they have the ability to be consumer advocates at five years, ten years. There'll be a lot of moves, you know, and I, who knows what's going to happen and how things are going to shake out, you know. I mean, they might invent a new word for regulation, you know, and, and it'd be a whole new swift delivery of energy. And it will, it could be more than just rightaways in the streets and loose hanging the lines and franchise fees. And so it's just, it's technology. And from what I understand, that the news account that I saw in Silicon Valley, they're light years ahead of us, they're just waiting for us to catch up. You know what I mean? They're actually sitting on products that they know can't move now because we, we can't handle them as a, the education of it all. You know, it's, so, I like the five.
I'm looking, I'm looking for the common ground. Is, is the only remaining question at this point whether we have the first review of five years or ten? Are we all on the same page on ten, fifteen, twenty? Okay, so it sounds like we have fairly split opinions on whether the first review is at five or ten years. And I think the ability to get four votes on skipping five years is going to be dependent upon how strong the agreement is relative to technology, legislative concerns and a development agreement. So I think that gives you guys some room to sit down and try to wordsmith it and figure it out. And then we'll come back together in another work session and see where we are based on the fruits of those conversations. Does that sound reasonable? We can go ahead on, is it section two? So tell us about section two.
Well, section two just basically says that we're going to exercise all the, follow all the rules and regulations that are there both the federal, state and local level. Section three is that they will, this is an important one, we meet on an annual basis because the orange there is included and review projects that we may need to work with them on, discuss installation addition, underground system as opposed to overhead. We prefer the necessitating arrangement for the city to pay for incremental costs associated with located facility underground and so forth. So that deals with the issue, as I said, the Supreme Court case said that we can't, can't acquire a line to pay for the costs that relate to underground just because we want to have it underground. And so we're prohibited there, but this would give us some understanding of what projects they're going to do in the coming year and we would talk about whether or not we wanted to have them underground.
See, again, I find that a little bit redundant because we get most specific back in section twenty-eight.
Right. It's twenty-eight, it clearly states that we'll have sixty days, they'll give us a figure in line of sixty days to decide if that figure, and I think this was language we added after, this was what we added after the, some meetings.
I didn't make any notes in sections two and three, but I've got a number of comments in section twenty-eight, which probably is easier to just wait till we get to section twenty-eight. So sections two and three, the way we see them right here with all the words, all the colors and everything, is exactly the way it would be in the franchise agreement?
Yes.
So did anybody have any concerns with sections two or three? Okay, so how about four?
Four was the language, yeah, four was the language that we proposed and there were no changes from them, so we're good to go. I think that's basic, basic language that they have in any of their contracts.
Everybody's okay with section four?
Five is, deals with maintenance of trees along there. We add language, pruning and removal of trees shall perform, shall be performed in accordance with the company's then current line clearance vegetation plan, as filed and approved by the Iowa Utilities Board as well as all applicable codes and standards they're in. So they have to, they have a plan, they have to file with the I U B and, and they have to follow that. And so then we can go back and look at how they've done the tree pruning and determine whether or not it takes that agreement that they have filed with the I U B and if it doesn't, then we can ask them to, you know, go back and redo it.
So section five would be the, the black and the orange tags, the way it's presented here, and everybody's okay with it? Or what? Okay.
Six is our language that we proposed, which is very standard. Construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repairs, basically it deals with this right-of-way issue of what they can do. We did add in for other public places, that was something that we felt. That way, I think that dealt with, they're going through parks or other areas that would be considered public places, we would be able to legislate that.
Section four.
Six.
Section six, page three.
You cool?
I guess.
Okay. So everybody's good with section six, huh? Okay.
Seven is similar type language dealing with, they're doing excavations and so forth and how it, what they have to do, replace, restore and replace what's been excavated so that it looks back to where it should be immediately previously existing condition.
Good with seven?
Eight is language that, that we've proposed back in the day. Yeah, that, yeah, that we included and they agreed was the, if they vacate a line, city shall grant a utility easement for said facilities. Health grant and company utility easement. So they have a cost to obtain easements for existing company facilities. It's language to protect them and us relative to mine movements.
And whenever we see the orange, it's language recommended for inclusion by the city administrator and I P N L agrees. So then the only question becomes is, does the council have any concerns with it? Everybody okay with section eight?
Okay, section nine and ten, eleven, basically they were, it's all language that we proposed and they had no issues with, basically that whole page four. We did add, probably the biggest thing was twelve, we added, well, I should go back up to ten. We added contractors or either of their employees or agents. A lot of their work is done by private contractors brought in to do the work. And so rather than just relying on their employees, we wanted to make sure contractors were included in that language. And section twelve, dealing with the technology issue, we put in there, maintain a modern and up-to-date system so that we're hitting again on the technology issue. And then thirteen, company will maintain compliance with Iowa Utilities Board's regular standard reliability. That was to beef up that section which they've got. They'll maintain reliability to our customers according to the standards. That way there was, because otherwise there was no measure included in that. That's they have to do a good job and we need to try and establish a standard.
So are there any concerns, council concerns with sections nine, ten, eleven, twelve or thirteen?
Okay. The area that was removed dealt with franchise fees. We modified the franchise fee part considerably. One of the things we found, we used, the example that Tom and I used was Mid-American Energy's franchise fee language. And what we found is, Alliant doesn't break their customers down in the same way that Mid-American does. So it didn't jive with, didn't work directly with the way they do their billing. And so a lot of these things that are included in here are items that allow us to work better with the billing system than Alliant has in the process they do. So that's why all the changes that occurred within the franchise. And we're not proposing any franchise fee. It's strictly in there so that if some council down the road makes the decision they want to have a franchise fee, the methodology is already there, the language is already in that franchise that you can take a vote and modify it to make it one percent, two percent, whatever, down the road, so, so don't worry.
Franchise fee pretty much goes from section fourteen clear through and including section twenty-seven?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-six, or twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six because that's.
Okay, so, you know, I don't know about you guys. I didn't spend a whole lot of time looking at those sections in great detail regarding the franchise fees because it's hard for me to envision a council that would be wanting to put a franchise fee in place. But if that ever changed, the mechanisms in here. Because as I understand a franchise fee, it's basically, Alliant simply becomes a conduit and it's basically a tax that we impose that you collect through monthly billing and then pass right back to us. And if we were going to do that, I think there's more efficient ways that we could come up with taxing people if that was the rule.
Didn't Des Moines have that?
Well, Des Moines does and they use it, they, they've been going through the issue, well, to the fact they were using it for their general fund way above what was required for the administration of the right-of-way. And that's why they got all the way to Supreme Court on that issue and they're still battling it because they were requiring it to balance their budget and that wasn't considered to be appropriate, so.
But we could build, we could build a fund to bury utilities, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, you could do that.
If people were. Nineteenth Street Citizens, Don, we met with them, Jeff, they were complaining about it.
You already pay one percent on it, that is the normal sales tax, the local option sales tax that you pay is at one percent. So if you, if you implemented a one percent franchise, all you would do is the sales tax that you, we receive now for paying on electric bill would then be taken out of our sales tax fund and put into a special fund. So anytime you would consider it, you're already collecting one percent on the electric bill.
Wouldn't the fee though, and dress, could, could help dress with, with doing those.
Yes, that would be a way.
Commercial alley.
And, and that would be a way that you could do it from the standpoint of that if you, if, if the community really wanted to have underground lines, they could then start paying for it in order for us to have the funds available to be able to do that.
And two, I think we would want, even though if it doesn't get implemented in the franchise, we want it to be choreographed with the agreement in those out-years, five, ten, fifteen, twenty-two, that, you know, we want to make sure that the fee's not getting charged, if there was a, you know, you know.
Well, and the other thing.
You want to address fees too.
And, and the other thing that's in here too is that you have the ability to change it, which we changed originally. Alliant proposed twenty-four months, you could only make a change every twenty-four months. We set it up for a year. The thing that I looked at was, say you had a specific project that you wanted to collect the funds in order to do through the, through the utility franchise, you felt like it was reasonable. You could do that, carry it for, say you needed three years with the revenues. You can set it up, do the three years, collect the money, pay for the project and then end the franchise. So you don't have to, once it's put into place, say, oh, well, we're stuck with one percent for the rest of the term. You can start it and then eventually stop it. You just can't change it twice within the same year.
That was good discussion. Are, are there any concerns with sections fourteen through twenty-six?
I'll just emphasize, this language is very similar to the agreement that was given, the chains are needed to accommodate the billing system, so.
Just a word to the last sentence just before eighteen.
Seventeen.
Last one is seventeen. An information required.
Is that, this, the from, the from is removed?
Oh, it's removed.
The from is removed.
It's confusing, not to get.
That's why I said it's in there.
It may look like it's, yeah, both words.
Oh, okay.
We were just, that was just a correction, but we, but we left the changes in, so what we, what you saw from the red line was transferred here into the colors, so.
Target.
No, no, that's fine.
Correct, that doesn't sound. Yeah. I'm going to move on to number twenty-seven, that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, twenty-seven, breach. You see there's a sentence there in the middle that's blue that we had included. What we did is it was doubling up, it was a redundant sentence. There was language that already existed, we basically said it twice when we wrote it, so we pulled one of those sentences out relative to negotiations and breach. And then twenty-eight, okay. Twenty-eight is the language relative, you said you had some notes on.
Yep.
Relative to what happens if we have a spot that we determined we want to do underground. Based on, what we're saying is, is they'll create a cost estimate that will tell us how much it costs to bury it versus the part that they're going to do above ground. And then allows the city time to make a decision on whether or not it's an expense that we want to cover should we determine that we think that that is an area where we want to make sure it's buried. And so this would give us the opportunity, which in the past we've, we've always had the opportunity, but we never dwelled on it on the standpoint of that, of making a conscious decision on whether a project is kind of like, a project would happen, they would say, well, we're going to have to move our lines and you want to bury, well, it's going to cost you, okay, no, and move on. And so now this is more or less, they have to create a, an estimate that helps us understand better what the cost is going to be and then give us the option of making a payment for those funds, so.
So I understand that, that we don't have the ability to force Alliant to bury. I understand, so I got no problem with it, that's beyond our control. My concerns are procedurally with putting the council in a decision, in a position to make a good decision. When requested, the company will provide to the city two estimates, an estimate for the project above ground and estimate for burying. One of my concerns is, is that you guys have complete control over both estimates. And I sometimes wonder if we really wanted something buried, like along Nineteenth Street, and you really don't want to bury. I'm looking for the right words, but I think you know where I'm going with this. I mean, what, what incentive do you have to make sure that they're accurate estimates? If you really want to kill a project, the easiest way to kill it is to make sure that it's more than we can afford. So that's issue number, concern number one. Secondly, the company reserves the right to bill the city for the amount that the incremental costs associated with the, the company reserves the right to bill the city for the amount that the incremental costs associated with the installation exceeds its estimate. Okay, again, you guys have complete control. First you got control over the initial estimate, then you have some control over the construction costs because you're managing them, and then you have control over what the final numbers look like. Several concerns with that, internal billing and account, cost accounting and so on. And basically, we could agree to bury a project and agree to an incremental cost, but not have any control over the cost and, and indeed what the final actual is. And it's basically, it could be perceived as an open checkbook. I have a concern there. And then the last sentence, I'm, I'm kind of wondering what you're going for when it says the company reserves the right to review all of the city's communications with its customers. What communications would we have with your customers that you feel the need to review? Has something happened in the past? I'm just trying to understand.
That's, that's a good question. I can answer that is, is that if you, let's say you have a neighborhood that has already had power lines existing and then you say, well, we want to put that neighborhood, residential neighborhood underground, okay? Well, then, you know, we can go ahead and put the facilities underground. But then in putting our facilities underground, we have transformers that no longer are on the pole, now they're on the ground. Then you have people that live in their homes, they have to change their service entrance, their, their primary panel. The other issue that you deal with is that if you have an older home, it may not be up to electrical code right now, but it's, they're getting by, nothing's being done.
Grandfathered.
It's grandfathered in. But once that panel's changed, then the electrician has to, a licensed electrician has to verify that that home meets all their water requirements. So now only do you have anywhere from five hundred to a couple of grand for a service entrance, now you, a consequence could be that the homeowner has to rewire the entire house. And so we just want to make sure, and that's not our, our responsibility is to do what you want to do relative to moving the facilities. But you'd be asking your customer. But you, you'd be asking your customers or your residents to have to expend money for service panels and potentially for wiring, and so if that's the case, we just want, we just want a cursory overview of the, of the letter, or however you would notice the customers, so that, we want to make sure that from a public safety uh, aspect, that, that things are covered. We're not here to tell you what to say or do this, or we just want to make sure that, that everything is covered. They understand that this is not our requirement, you know, that, that, you know, the city has, uh, request this be done, number one. And then number two, that they have a clear understanding of the potential costs related to meeting electrical codes. And that's, that's what that's about.
Okay. Then, back on the preceding issues that I articulated, does anybody else have concerns with this section that I haven't covered, so we can get them all on the table at one time? Okay.
But this is all scratched, though.
No, no, this is included.
The blue.
The blue.
Recommended for exclusion, it says.
Well, no, we're.
Oh, this is.
Colors, okay.
The, obviously if we submitted estimates to you, you would be free to have them double check. I think a lot of the estimates, we have a certain number of dollars per linear foot, you know, if it's buried, or, um, we've got some pretty, um, real time estimates for overhead that our field engineers, I'm sure, would, you have to be sure. There could be instances where there's boulder, rock, or something underground that would add to that cost, but, um, I, I do think there are some standard costs that we use in developing those cost estimates that would be free to scrutiny, um, whatever. So it's not like we have anything to hide as far as cost assessments are concerned, they are, they are, they are, so. I don't know if we have any incentive to try to sway you to overhead or underground, you know, or as long as we can provide you with these justification for the cost estimates, you know, it's really, um, not our concern, really.
My suggestions are, I think what we can do is if you're gonna provide, I think that an estimate of the cost of project instead of just saying estimate, it would be something along the lines of a, a detailed estimate, so that you know footages, types of wire, et cetera, so that we could take it to an electrical engineer and say, though, these numbers look right, have the footages for both the overhead and the underground, and we would be able to run it by somebody else. Because if they just said it's gonna cost five hundred thousand to put it above ground and six hundred thousand to bury it, we have no idea to know the specific terms, uh, types of wire you're using, et cetera, can make a difference as to what the costs are. So we have the detailed estimate, footages and types, that would allow us the ability to verify that. Secondly, um, secondly, as far as the incremental costs, when we do, uh, special assessment projects, if you do a voluntary special assessment project, typically you put a limit on what the incremental cost increase can be. Ten percent increase is what I typically remember seeing, so that you would say that, um, incremental on the city, the right to bill the city for the amount that the incremental cost exceeds its estimate by a maximum of ten percent, or something like that, so that we limit the amount that we're exposed to, um, but they also then receive. That then puts them on the hook to try and bring it within budget, but if they do run into an issue, and that's the way the city does a voluntary assessment project, so we can treat it the same way.
When a line does projects, like Nineteenth Street, is there a project agreement in place with a line?
I don't think so, I think there's an understanding of what work is going to be done, where they're going to be in the right of way, and that kind of thing, but I don't know that we don't.
Where, where I was going with that is, you know, think back to the Nineteenth Street overpass. And the issue that we went through with extras after the fact, and getting into trying to assess blame. I think there needs to be a mechanism in place when a line's doing projects, that if they start on the front end seeing things that are different than the assumptions on which estimates and, and project work is agreed upon, that we're working that out on the front end rather than being caught with a surprise at the back end. And I would think absent that kind of notification and, and communication, that a line would have some culpability for overruns. We, we need a, a chance to mitigate. Do you understand what I'm saying? So is there some way of building this discussion that we've just had into the verbiage?
I always. So I think, I think that we're, um, we're getting, we're getting more detailed rather than just, we'll do this, and, you know, present an estimate, we'll make a decision, and then we vote, and then we're basically on the hook for whatever happens after that, I think you're right. I think that, um, it might be that, uh, an agreement to go to arbitration or something like that, if we can't come to an agreement regarding responsibilities, um, that kind of thing might be.
Do you guys have any other thoughts on twenty-eight? Everybody's good, okay. So I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, twenty-nine, all that language is in there, and I dealt with the annual report, just kind of clarified that. Thirty, some language is taken out, and some is added back in relative to rates issue. This was probably the other issue that, um, we were looking for additional language for, and, uh, relative to, this was a concern for, um, a concern for a line.
I'm not able to tell with the various fonts and stuff, what thirty is.
Yeah, what thirty has is if, as you see, um, at the first sentence, the sentence from the company shall supply all the way utilities board is included. But then, consumers with city at reasonable rates is excluded. Then we pick up, then it goes again, is recognized that under statute of the state of Iowa Utilities Board is vested with the legal authority, so we leave out, up at Iowa Department of Congress, that's left out. Legal authority to fix rates, et cetera. And then it is also recognized by both the city, the company and the city, that the city council, so that matters is eliminated, so it goes, and the city, that the city through its city council shall have the right to participate in any rate case proceeding in accordance with the rights under the Iowa Code and our Administrative Code. And then everything else in thirty is taken out. And twenty-eight and twenty-nine are also eliminated. So, basically, you know, we were looking at that we would have the right to regulate their rates if the need to Iowa Utilities Board went away. Through the discussion, um, and I guess through the discussion I have with Ivan Weber, he said in the nineteen sixty, prior to about nineteen sixty, that was, the ability of each local government could negotiate their, negotiate their own regular electric utilities. Then the state took it away, gave it to the Iowa Utilities Board, and they began regulating rates at the state level rather than at the local level. So us proposing this, he stated, was not abnormal to propose, but given where regulation has gone, the state of Iowa likely is not to relinquish this responsibility, so that's kind of where we're at.
And so we elect.
So, and, so that's kind of where we're, that's kind of where we're at with this. I think this is an issue that, um, if we were going through the process, um, and we felt like things were getting out of hand relative to rates, I think this is something that the windows helps us with, we start talking. Where unfortunately, if we, if we then had, what I guess what I'm saying is, if, if the state relinquished the right, deregulated with the windows, we would then, within one to four years, have that ability to, uh, we would have that ability then to begin to do the rates. So I think that by, if we get the windows that we're talking about, we create ourselves, um, thank you. We create ourselves the opportunity to become the regulator if that all of a sudden becomes something that we can do. So not including it in language here isn't going to prevent us from having that ability if we want it. We just have to wait until that five-year window time. So there may be a period of time where we wouldn't have that authority. So I think that if they'll agree to the, the windows, I think we protect ourselves in this respect, and we can move on from this segment, so.
But if we don't get the windows, are we comfortable with it?
No, I think that, I think that, uh, the windows make sense from the standpoint of that we don't know, uh, you know, there was a push for deregulation at one time. Uh, I, I like the ability of being able to say that we'll be the ones regulating the rates. It used to be that way, and I think there's, we have some smart people here that can help determine, get the right experts to be able to determine what the rates would be. But I don't expect it to go away, that's the other thing, I don't expect the Iowa Utilities Board to relinquish that authority. I think it's too big of a power issue for the state level, I don't expect them to, but if it did go away, I'd want to be able to make sure that we got a chance to protect our citizens and do the right regulation.
So is everybody okay with section thirty, the way it's been rewarded?
As long as we get the windows. Okay. Thirty-one, we, uh, determined that was redundant, we really probably couldn't include thirty-one, because we were gonna include it in one. Section one, so we'll take out thirty-one. Thirty-two, standard language, that if you have one part not considered constitutional, the rest of it continues. That's standard language, is it angry enough? The formal, um, former section thirty-two that is omitted, um, discussions with, uh, the reason, I went ahead and agreed that we would exclude that was in the discussions with, um, Ivan Weber. He stated that this is a, this is really a big issue for a franchise. I mean, if, if they're negotiating the sale of their company, um, to anybody, having this, we could theoretically stop the sale of the whole system by us saying we won't, we won't agree to you in assigning this to somebody else. And so it's really, it's a, it's a deal stopper that we shouldn't include if we want to get a deal.
Well, I, I think, I think this goes to what Councilman Weaver and Mickey have been saying then too, you know. I, I can see us yielding on that in exchange for the windows. And, and that pushes me closer to where they are, and having the five-year window in there too. So we, we're cool on thirty-two?
Thirty-three, um, this is your basic language if we approve and accept, sign, company shall have, uh, shall within ninety days, instead of thirty, after city council approved, file in, uh, opposite of the clerk of the city with acceptance, instead of, instead of thirty. That would give them more time to review it, that's all it really does.
And we generally did it turn around quicker, but, yeah, you know, once the ordinances are passed, they have to course be published, and then we receive the paperwork, and then we send a letter of acceptance. And that process usually takes forty-five to sixty days, sometimes sooner, depends on how quickly it gets published and such. And that's why we asked for.
Um, thirty-four and thirty-five are just basically saying that, uh, once this is approved, it supersedes what was there before.
We're cool with thirty-four and thirty-five? No, I got, I got one thing that I missed, that I had marked in the gas, but not in the electric.
Okay.
If we could go, uh, and this may be the attorneys, I don't know, if we go to section ten?
In the gas agreement?
Yeah, in the gas.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm in the electric agreement, that's, that's where, I, I'm standing on electric, but I failed to mark it on the electric agreement. I did mark it on the gas, but before we finish up with electric, you might as well. In section ten, which is on page four, which is basic, basically indemnification. The company shall indemnify and say harmless the city for many and all claims, suits, losses, damages, costs, expenses, or attorney's fees incurred on account of injury or damage to any person or property to the extent caused or occasioned by the company's negligence in construction. You know, one, one of the things that you guys have talked about for the last several years, is we've talked about the franchise renewal, is the fact that you indemnify it, so if somebody runs into an electric pole, we're, we're indemnified. But as I read this, it says to the extent caused or occasioned by the company's negligence in construction, reconstruction, excavation, or operation or maintenance of the electric facilities. Well, if you've got a power pole sitting where power poles normally sit, you certainly haven't been negligent, so is the city truly indemnified?
That's, that's a legal matter. What we're saying is that we, we accept the responsibility if we do the negligence or omission relative to our construction, and that's what this document says here. Uh, I can't answer that relative to, I, I don't know that somebody hit a pole would identify the city, or.
So, basically, the argument that you've used for us to move ahead sooner rather than later as far as somebody hitting a power pole, maybe wasn't applicable.
Did, uh, Weber read that right? No, I haven't sent, but I, I can send this to Ivan Weber and make sure it's correct.
As, as I read this, it, I get the impression, of course, I'm not a lawyer, that our indemnification is limited to your negligence. Which is going to be a very rare occurrence, and so I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure how much the, sorry, this may not be of interest to you, but it is of interest to me. I'm not really sure how well the city is protected regarding indemnification.
Let's let Mr. Weber look at this.
It has to be looked at a lot more.
I'll, I'll send it to him. I, I do miss, I miss one thing also, in electrical. Is it beneficial for you to have your stuff buried, or have all the poles and wires scrubbed out? You know, with the ice storms, flooding, the whole bit, tornadoes, it's gotta be. It's gotta be beneficial to have your product in the ground.
I think there's cases where it is, uh, depending on, uh, non-trades and stuff in the area, um, it's also more expensive to bury, generally speaking.
No, no, we, we, we've already covered that, it's too, it's expensive to bury it. But now that I'm, in my mind, I forgot this too, Scott, I've seen photographs of line after line fell. That's a lot of, that's a lot of expense. Yeah, right, so, you know what, I, I want to back up just a second. It, it is beneficial for us to work with you closer about burying these lines and it just as being, uh, the burden of us carrying the whole cost, because in the long run, it's saving you a lot of money. I think, I think we ought to look at that, 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 I'm sure somebody's done some study out there about utilities above ground, utilities below ground, somebody has. And I think it would behoove us to, and we, you know, I don't think it's all our burden, you know, I mean, right?
That's a good point.
One example I can give, just, and it's not electric, but it still relates to what you were talking about was on Twelve Street Northwest, we got a lot of phone calls on that gas, um, that was put up right there on Twelve Street in Beers. You know, if a car would have hit that or something, so.
And hopefully with what we're putting in here on communication, and the meeting on the front end of, of the year, and talking through various planned projects and so on, the type of thing that we had on Twelve Street might be avoidable. Brent, also.
Yeah, I missed one.
Missed one that, Max, you've been highly interested in, that we should probably double back on.
Yeah, we need to double back, in, in section twenty-eight, no electric. This is also in the gas, but it really doesn't apply that much in the gas, because there isn't a gassed gas. Should within the period of franchise developments within the field of producing, supplying, or distributing electricity, the company ought to be even more effective and efficiently. An economically served the customers and the city through use of an alternative substance or material other than the current process of producing electricity, then the company may petition the city council, which with such requirements or limitations, if deemed necessary to protect the public health and safety, may allow the use of substances or material under terms of addition to the franchise. One of the things that I looked at was, um, this, this is one where the windows requirement would also help us, because as we identify, or they identify, different ways to produce electricity, as you were saying earlier, Max, with, if they're not looking at it, we can then talk to them about it at the end of that, that five years, or if they're doing something that we don't want to. If the, the problem we have about requiring them though to, you know, say not, say there's some type of way of making electricity we don't agree with as a group, we, to make them, to say they can't use that kind of electricity to us, there's no right now way in the system, the way electrical grid works, to say we don't get that electricity, there's no way to, like. There's no way to, like, parcel that, you can't, it's not like a river where you can divert it and say, we're not gonna get that. But I do think that it makes sense to consider the possibility of putting a period after electricity, you go like four lines down and it says, other than the current process of producing and distributing electricity. I know that Keith doesn't really care for that, but that, because we're putting something in that really doesn't deal with the right-of-way issues that a franchise does. But that kind of a statement would state, to me, the opportunity to more effectively, efficiently, or economically produce electricity, that we, that's what we want a line to do. And that, and we're making a statement, this is how we would like to have them produce their electricity, so that we're watching out for the customers. So, but to say that protecting and limiting what they can produce power would, would not, I think, be something that we could do. But as it came up as an issue of a new way to produce power with the windows, we would then be able to have that discussion. So, is that agreeable? Yeah, so that would need to be added back in.
Just those first four sentences.
Yeah, just those first four sentences. And it's more of a statement of principle relative to the council regarding them being economical than it is to necessarily be any real, there's no meat there, it's just saying this is what we prefer. This is what we want to see out of our electric.
Cool, so, we done with electric for tonight? So, gas should be easier because it's very similar.
Gas is very.